Good girl.
Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. It's good to see everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Vanessa, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Novardi. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
Here.
Trustee Milliken.
Here.
Trustee Millschine.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. I will now entertain nominations to fill the office of Chair to serve a two-year term. The trustee elected will begin serving his or her term immediately, this evening. That means this evening. So, a member can nominate himself or herself, and a nomination need not be seconded. Okay? Are there any nominations for Chair? Trustee Fleming?
I would like to nominate trustee Davis for Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
President, I'd like to nominate myself for Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we have received a nomination for Chair. Trustee Davis has received the nomination. Are there any other further nominations? No. So, can I have... Now, I'd like to have a motion to close nominations.
I move that we close the nominations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support that.
Thank you. Support. It is moved and seconded to close the nominations for the office of Chair. All those in favor... Do I need roll call for this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say no. Okay, good. The ayes have it. Nominations are now closed, and the board will vote. Please conduct a roll call vote. Vanessa Brooks.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
You have to say who you're voting for. Davis for Davis. Trustee Davis for Davis.
Trustee Davis for Davis. Trustee Fleming?
Trustee Fleming for Davis.
Trustee.
Trustee Hatcher for Davis.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton for Davis.
Trustee Milliken?
Milliken for Davis.
Trustee Millschine.
Millschine for Davis.
Okay. Congratulations. Board Chair. You now may take your seat. It was nice knowing you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Can I find a chair in the audience? No. You might want to say something like, "Thank you."
I will now entertain nominations to fill the office of Vice Chair to serve a two-year term. The trustee elected will begin serving his or her term immediately.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate trustee Milliken for Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
Second.
Okay, it is moved and seconded to close nominations for office of Chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Nominations are closed, and the board will vote. Chair Davis. Chair Davis for trustee Milliken for Vice Chair. Trustee Fleming?
Fleming for Milliken.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher for Milliken.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton for Milliken.
Trustee Milliken?
Milliken for Milliken.
Trustee Millschine.
Millschine for Milliken.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Milliken. A roll call has been taken, and all the trustees' names is called. And, let's see. By... Where on the next side? Okay. So, our next position to be filled. The Chair will entertain nominations to fill the office of Treasurer to serve a two-year term. The trustee selected will begin serving his or her term immediately. Are there any nominations for the Chair of... I mean, for the position of Treasurer?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate trustee Devardi for Treasurer.
There be any other nominations for Treasurer? Okay.
I move the nominations be closed.
Okay, it is moved and seconded... Excuse me. To close the nominations for the office of Treasurer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Nominations are now closed, and the board will vote. Chair Davis? Chair Davis for Devardi Treasurer. Trustee Fleming?
Fleming for Devardi.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher for Devardi.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton for Devardi.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken for Novardi.
Trustee Millschine.
Millschine for Devardi.
Okay, we are now moving on to the position of Secretary. The Chair will now entertain nominations to fill the office of Secretary to serve a two-year term. The trustee elected will begin serving his or her term immediately. There are any nominations for office of Secretary?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate trustee Hatcher for Secretary.
Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? I mean, for, excuse me, office of Secretary?
Move to close nominations.
Okay. All right. The nominations are now closed. For the office of Secretary.
We should vote.
Oh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Thank you. The ayes have it. Now, the nominations are closed, and the board will vote. Chair Davis? Davis for Hatcher, office of Secretary. Trustee Fleming?
Fleming for Hatcher.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher for Hatcher.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton for Hatcher.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Gives me pleasure to cast my vote for Hatcher.
Trustee Millschine.
Millschine for Hatcher.
That's it?
Thank you, everyone. We are now in a... In our new positions, and I believe it's going to go really well. Thank you very much. I appreciate your votes, and I appreciate everyone in the positions that they're currently holding. So, we will move on.
Excuse me, does she call this meeting to order, the organizational? Do we have to close the other one? Okay, you have to... You have to call the organizational meeting. Does she have to call?
Call to order.
Okay, call the organizational meeting to order. Are you interested in any of these assignments?
Not particularly.
And then we have approval of the agenda.
I've had a look at them briefly.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to call the organizational meeting to order.
Do I hit the gavel?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I gotta catch all the steps, no? And we're now going to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
All opposed.
All opposed? The motion carries, but the agenda's been approved. Moving on to Tab A. The 2023 Board of Trustees Schedule of Activities and Events. Let's see. Tab A is the schedule of on-campus activities that the board may be interested in attending.
No action meets.
No action?
No. Yeah. Are there any questions about them?
Any questions? Any of the trustees? I do notice...
We don't have to...
All right, moving on to Tab B. Is an informational... If this information is not correct, we... Okay. Background information on members of Board of Trustees in Tab B. Do you find anything in your bio that is incorrect, or you need to add? Please let Vanessa know. Thank you. Moving on to Tab C. Terms of Board of Trustees Members, Class of 2023 to 2024. If any of the information here needs to be updated, could you please let Vanessa know as well? Okay, moving on to Tab D. Is the approval of minutes? That the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of December 13, 2022?
Wait a minute. Now, we have Tab D. This is an assignment. Tab D. That's okay.
Jumped ahead, that's fine. Trustee assignments.
Do they all have the same list? Yes, do you just read the blue card?
Okay.
That's all you have to do.
All right. Please take a look at the liaison list, and send me an email if you're interested in an assignment by February 13. Assignments will be in the February Board Materials.
Okay. Now, I'm going to approve. Now, okay. Thank you.
I could do this one.
I've been... If you wanted...
Tell me what you don't want to.
Tab D, Approval of Minutes. The recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the December 13, 2022 meeting, and the January 3, 2023 special meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Next, moving on to Citizen Participation. Vanessa, were there any verbal communications? Okay, thank you. Now, we have... WCC Education Association, Ms. Julie Kissel.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
It is January 2023, and the WCCA would like to welcome Alex to the Board of Trustees. Alex knows WCC well, and we're looking forward to his new role, serving the college. So, please reach out to the WCCA if you have any questions.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, may I say something? We can't hear you.
Oh. Is it the microphone, or?
I don't know.
Casey told me I was always too loud.
It's what?
It's broadcasting out there. They can hear. We can't hear.
Oh, they can hear, but we can't?
Well, that's what it seems.
Really? Well, this is the people. Need to hear.
Okay. Well, welcome, Alex. I'm just gonna yell now. Casey, I'm sorry.
Use your teacher voice.
I will. I was trying to control for that. All right. But welcome to everyone. It's 2023. So, regarding grievances, there are no active grievances at this time, as the grievance from last year remains in abeyance. However, there is an open issue that could result in a grievance as early as next week. But the WCCEA remains committed to the continued conversations to make sure that we have sustainable and transparent processes that follow the contract. I do meet regularly with VPI Vega regarding active faculty issues, and together, we've been able to manage staffing issues with little difficulty. I appreciate his openness to listen to the membership and work to resolve issues that... As they occur. So, another issue that directly involves me is the work being done by the English and College Readiness Department in reviewing writing samples. Since we left campus on March 2020, the department has worked to develop process for review of authentic writing samples. Of course, there are always chances for fraud and plagiarism, and lately, this has increased with the use of AI tools, despite the efforts of our added video directions and the changing to the writing prompts. Those of us reading these samples every day of the week are working closely with the Dean of Students, but we are spending hours and hours of time trying to sort out what is a valid sample. And so, like most things, the goal is to create that sustainable practice that serves the students and supports our mission, and it is a work in progress. But especially, thank you to Linda and Clarence for all of their support, and we hope to have something solved maybe as early as next week to cut down on some of the fraud issues. Jason Withrow, the WCCA Chief Negotiator, is beginning his listening sessions to ready for the adjunct negotiations that will likely take place in June. We will approve our team in February at our monthly board meeting. The WCCEA wants to congratulate Julianne Davies on her retirement after 11 years, and we are pleased that she'll continue to do some teaching for the college. We're also aware that there will be continued retirements and departures from the college. And so, our goal is to make sure that we are prepared for those transitions whenever possible. Nevertheless, all of this change can be disconcerting and overwhelming. However, as Dr. King reminds us, change does not roll in on the wheels of inevitability, but comes through continuous struggle. So, with this in mind, the WCCEA will continue its march forward to serve its members and this institution well. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, are there any public comments? Okay, it's a C and none. We'll move on to written communications. Vanessa, were there any written communications received? Okay, thank you. Monthly Report. Tab E. Personnel Recommendations. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion? So moved.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments? Yes, Secretary Hatcher?
Lot of part-time people, as usual. I have a couple of questions on page two. Nathan Sprague. Where is she? Is that person... Who is that? What dean does that person report to? I couldn't find him.
I'm sorry. What was the question?
Okay, thank you. And...
What dean is that person a report to?
I'm sorry.
Nathan.
Nathan.
Nathan Sprague.
Nathan Sprague.
Oh, thank you.
And there's an... I didn't know there was an Automation and Robotics Department, but yes, good. Could someone describe very briefly the new position Nursing Program Quality Manager?
I could probably.
Okay, whoever.
I think I could. Where am I? Can I do it? Let's see, is Sheri here? Okay, Dean Lambert, how about you? This is a... This is a great job, by the way. So, we... I'm very aware of what it is, but she'd probably do a much better job than I would to explain it.
Welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. So, the nursing quality...
No, we better come up here. I'm sorry, Dean Lambert.
Is this good? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, welcome. So, the Nursing Program Quality Manager position was created approximately six months after I started. One of the things that we recognized there was some overlap with the current position in the department chair role. And so, in looking at what the nursing department needed, we held several meetings with faculty and leadership to look at what opportunities we might have, what gaps we could identify, and we created this Nursing Program Quality Manager position. This individual is responsible for three key areas in the nursing curriculum. Is number one. Student success, number two. And then, our accreditation, number three. So, their focus and emphasis is going to be on NCLEX scores and board rates, incorporating best practice across the entire curriculum, especially related to the new NCLEX, next generation. Making sure that it's not just in the classroom, but it's in clinical, lab, across the entire curriculum. So, it's really a focus on quality with curriculum, student success, and accreditation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Does it answer your questions?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah. And maybe for HR, the Financial Aid Technician, is that... That's not really a new position. It was already on the chart, wasn't it? As vacant.
Where... I'm sorry, I'm trying to... Maybe I could answer some questions?
It's a replacement? Yeah, it's not a new position. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I just want to give the people who are ending employment through retirement or moving on, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to be with this wonderful college.
Rusty McKnight Morton? Vanessa, could you call the roll? Was this a roll? Do we not have to do a roll? Is it for the personnel? Is it a voice? So, we did that already? Now, you just have to... It's not money. All right. Moving on to Tab F. Before we vote on the financial reports, VP Barnes, is there anything you would like to highlight for us?
Sure, I'll walk you through the financial statements briefly.
Great, thank you. I can hear you now.
Loud and clear. We've got you.
Okay. I was hoping it would be on the screen, but hopefully, it's on your screen. So, walking you through the revenues briefly. Are you guys seeing it, or no?
No, they're working on it. There's a glitch in it.
Oh, there's a glitch.
But they have their board...
Okay.
Does everybody have a board packet?
So, it's the second page. It's the second page after the narrative. So, this is what I'm working off of. I'll start with the revenues. We're entering the winter semester, so you can see the favorability there as of the end of December. I would say it's going to be there or better. As we sit here almost through January, it's going to be about $600,000 favorable is what I'm expecting for the winter semester. For student fees, we're almost at budget as of the first two semesters, so we only have part of the spring semester to go, or the spring semester to go to, and I'm confident that we'll be above budget there as well. For local property taxes, this is the same... Roughly the same number that I've shown you in previous months. About a half a million dollars of that is timing, so we've received money a little earlier than we thought we would. But the remainder, about $1.2 million, should be favorable at the end of the year. State appropriations, I'm expecting because of personal property taxes there. That also should remain favorable. In fact, it should be slightly more favorable than the current rate at about half a million dollars favorable by the end of the year. Investment income is doing very well because of interest rates. They will continue to do well. I would expect that to roughly double by the time we get... That variance to roughly double by the time we get to the end of the year. So, in total, you can see that the revenue is already quite favorable, and it should remain there through the end of the year. In terms of our expenditures, you can see that it's also favorable. I would say that about $1 million of that is simply spending that has been postponed to the second half of the year. So, they just haven't spent it yet. It will be spent... Or at least $1 million of that favorability will be spent in the second half of the year. But in summary, it's... We're doing quite well. The only negative number you see on the chart are utilities. Utilities. We tried to account for the fact there would be more people on campus, but we've underestimated that a bit. So, we are using more electricity and gas than we expected, and we're looking into how to improve that. But a portion of that is also timing. It's not just unfavorability. The one thing, just as a reminder, that's not here, the sanitary pipe. So, we'll be coming back at some point before the end of the fiscal year to ask for additional funding for the sanitary pipe, but that is not reflected in these numbers.
Madam Chair, I would like to... Like to ask you... Mentioned the utilities, and it just jogged my memory. Are we still getting a discount from DTE? Because we have been getting a discount.
Yeah, we do get a educational discount from our natural gas from DTE. We do get that, yes.
Still getting it?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Tab F. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for December 2022 as follows. General Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tab G. Facilities Development Report. VP Beschi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Begin with the update of the active deferred maintenance projects we have going on. Over the holiday break in December, a lot of work began on the replacement of the floors in the LA building. This is a photo of the first floor. And photos of the third. So, the third and first floors of the LA building were replaced. Most of that work is complete. All of the third floor is finished. Most of the first floor, in terms of the rubber flooring, is down, and then they have to come back, still do some painting, floor base, and work like that. But the process involved was removing the existing ceramic tile, applying a very thin coat floor prep, which is a self-leveling slurry that goes down over the concrete cement, and then they come back and apply a rubber floor. But the project was completed over the holiday season and wrapped up the first few weeks of January, and it looks very good. Over the holiday period, the ongoing LED lighting upgrade continued. We moved the... Crew moved over to the OE building. This is the classroom that shows the new lighting upgrades from the fluorescent fixtures to the LED. This project is ongoing campus-wide, and we'll go through all the classrooms. There's a couple benefits to this project. Number one, the LED fixtures consume about a third of the power or wattage of the fluorescent lights that they replace, and they also last about three times longer, so they only need to be replaced a third of the time. So, there's a two-part savings. Is this monthly savings of the power? Yes, trustee Hatcher?
There's a third. There's a third saving, and that's where people who get migraines won't get them.
Yes, thank you. There's three benefits to that project.
Right.
Another project that's ongoing is the... We call it the Campus-Wide Restroom Renovation. It really is focusing on the LA building. Last month, we issued a contract to Hobbs &amp; Black to begin the design. So, they will do a comprehensive design of a bathroom renovation for the LA building, which will be new floors, countertops, sinks, bathroom partitions, wall paints, lights, et cetera. And then, we'll do an RFP, go out for pricing, and proceed with the renovation of the bathrooms in the LA building. Sanitary Main Replacement Project is a large-scale deferred maintenance project. In December, we issued a contract to Washington All Engineering to do the engineering design. That work should be complete by the end of February. We'll do an RFP, hopefully be to the board in March, April, with a proposal for approval. Begin construction... begin construction May, anticipate a completion date of August on that. EV charging station and design replacement. December, we issued a contract to Oscar Larson for the purchase of three new EV charging stations to go in the parking structure. They should be in late February or March. Moving on to campus repairs and maintenance, the main project we have under that category is the sanitary main piping repair, which was a replacement of the existing system that failed. We made those repairs, obviously, in November. We also installed the bypass system, had it winterized over December, and that is up and running, and is our primary system that's in place for our forest sanitary main, and will be in operation until the new permanent sanitary main system is completed in August. Talked about some of the construction projects that were issued, or construction contracts that were issued in the last 30 days. Challenger Technologies, we issued a contract to them to install a single-bode fiber run to the floor boxes in the lobby and atrium of ML. That was to help improve the speed and reliability of that network. And that concludes my facilities development report. Any questions?
Any questions?
I just want to follow up, the, in the Student Center Building, you're going to be doing those bathrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the list.
Okay, and?
I don't have a timeframe?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying they're going to be done.
It will be done.
And especially the ones that says you can just go in, like, there's lockers in that room, is that going to be taken care of too?
All of the restrooms.
All of them, I'm just double checking.
You will.
Okay, thank you.
trustee Hatcher?
I think you did a renumbering of the rooms in the Student Center Building. Is that, that's correct, the re?
We find it?
Yeah, right.
Yes, so the refinding, that was one of the consequences or actions for that refinding signage project in the LA building. That project is, in terms of the signage, is complete, there was a few punchless items. What's left to be done is the work behind the scenes, so now there's fire panels that have to be relabeled, there's maps with our famous work order system, so we have things behind the scenes that we have to now go back and correlate with the new numbering floor scheme for that project.
Because with the new flooring, in the first and third floor, giving directions to students, you can't say it's just past the red tile, because the flooring is all the same, so it's good to have the renumbering done.
We're looking at that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We just move on? Moving on to remarks. Are there any remarks from the members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Hatcher?
I would like to welcome Alex as well, and I'd also like to thank Vanessa for all the data stuff of what's coming up, and all the events, and what's scheduled. It's very, very helpful to have that, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any others? Trustee, how do you pronounce your name?
As long as you get the M right, after that, it doesn't really matter, but it's Milstein.
Milstein, okay, thank you.
Thank you to the Board for selecting me to finish off the term of Mr. Lando. I'm very much looking forward to being on this Board. This college means a lot to me and my family, and I look forward to serving our entire community, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you, and Happy New Year to everyone. I will say I have started my New Year's resolution, and I do plan to keep it. I joined the Fitness Center across the street. It's a fantastic facility, and, and I'm chair, so I'm really excited for this adventure that I'm on, and I thank everyone for their support.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done.
For President's remarks?
Yes, thank you. Welcome, everyone, and Happy New Year again. I'd like to thank the trustees for the roles that you served, actually, for the roles you've served in the past, and those of you last year, last two years. It's good to see that trustee Hatcher is the secretary. It's good to see that trustee DeVardy is the treasurer, and I'd like to also recognize trustee Milliken, who served as a chair. It's a great honor to work with you as the chair. I appreciate the time that you spent with me to determine the agenda, to give advice whenever needed, and counsel, and always answer your cell phone, so.
It's a lot of hard work, as trustee Davis, Chair Davis will find out.
So I really would like to, and really, to all the trustees, you've done, you do such a great service to this college, you really do, and also to me, so thank you so much. But trustee Vice Chair Milliken?
In honor of your past chairmanship, we have something for you. Now we'd like to open, sir. It's a Christmas present.
It's not a Christmas present.
Are there glasses, or?
We are supposed to give up to a glass.
Don't make these easy.
One of the 16-year-old kids.
Very carefully wrapped by somebody. For that, I am grateful. We're getting very close now.
There it is.
I have looked my own gavel.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Oh, that's nice.
I guess I'll have to promise not to bring this to the meeting. We can't have two gavels in the same.
Always be a back pocket.
Well, look at this, this is a very handsome souvenir set of a couple of years that we've invested here, and.
Oh, that's nice.
Look at that. Great red, stands out, probably finds us in the dark. Thank you.
You're welcome, and if you return it to us, we will have it engraved.
Well, thank you, that's even better. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have more to say.
Yes, please, no, go ahead.
I'd also like to welcome Alex Milstein to the Board of Trustees. Thank you. MLK Celebration was outstanding this year. Unfortunately, I was unable to be there personally, but I heard so many great reviews of it. And I would like to thank Dr. Eric Reed for doing such an excellent job, and also Dr. Clarence Jennings for the work that you did in creating a new Martin Luther King event. The other was excellent as well, but it's good to see each year we bring in new ideas, and it continues to improve, because it's a very important celebration for us at this college. I also would like to thank our student, Kenyatta Ration, for her performance, her musical performance, and our excellent student speakers, as well as our county commissioner, Caroline Saunders, and our WCC Student and Black Student Union President, Shamaya Reeves. Thank you, trustee Milliken, for being in attendance at that event.
I was pleased to be there, thank you, and I want to tell Dr. Reed and Dr. Jennings what a nice event they conducted, it was very well done.
Thank you. As part of the MLK event, the winners of this year's Equity in Action Awards were also recognized. These awards recognize WCC employees and community members who exemplify the ideals of Dr. King. Award winners this year were Shayna Barker, the WCC Foundation Director of Scholarships, the Alumni Association, and the Emergency Fund. Christina Doe, WCC Coordinator for Student Equity and Inclusion. Cheryl Harvey, the WCC Director of the Center for Student Success. Turquoise Neil, the Principal at Ypsilanti Middle School. And Calista Marie Walker, the Founder of Our Community Reads. Congratulations to all of our winners. And Student Welcome Day, again, was an excellent tradition that was celebrated last week. It is always handled by the Student Development and Activities Department, so I'd like to thank Pete Luskovich and his team for doing an outstanding job, as well as Provost Blakey and VP Jennings, so thank you so much. And that is, concludes my remarks.
Thank you, President Blanca. We move on to old business. Tab H, Siemens One-Year Service Agreement. Do I read the whole thing? Okay, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve this agreement with Siemens Industry Inc. for a one-year agreement in the amount not to exceed $196,908. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Support.
Any discussion? No? Vanessa, call roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milstein?
Yes.
Tab I, Larry L. Whitworth, Occupational Education Building HVAC Upgrades. Tab H, oh, sorry, excuse me, tab I is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract for Monroe Plumbing and Heating Company of Monroe, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $229,000. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Are there any discussions? None? Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milstein?
Yes.
On to new business. Tab J, the appointment of the 2023 Board Negotiating Team for the WCC ASME Local 1921 Contract. VP Schwick?
This first item, tab J, is the appointment of the collective bargaining team on behalf of the college with respect to the ASME Local 1921 Collective Bargaining Agreement. That labor agreement is scheduled to expire on April 30th of 2023, and we expect to be preparing for negotiations in early February and beginning that bargaining shortly thereafter. And so we would request your approval of the bargaining team as indicated on tab J.
Okay, are there any discussions? Trustee Hatcher?
Maybe for the lawyer, is it possible to do these all at once?
Sure, we can just combine J, K, and L.
I was looking, thank you, trustee, I was looking at that, too.
Because I'm not, unless there are objections to any one of them.
VP Schwick?
No, not at all.
Okay. We need to make a motion to approve all three at once, J, K, and L?
Well, this is for discussion now, but we could amend the agenda to make.
Oh, first we have to do action, okay.
Do either K or L need further explanation?
No, only for K that the, the OPT agreement will be expiring on June 30th of 2023, and regarding tab L, the adjunct faculty contract expires on August 21st of 23.
Okay, so what's the language?
Need a motion to move three items, K, J, K, and L, to, to an action item?
Madam Chair?
trustee Hatcher?
Go ahead. Madam Chair, I move that we make tab J, K, and L action items together on the agenda?
Okay.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on, no, okay, so we can go ahead and vote, vote on this? All right? Okay, Vanessa?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milstein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Get a motion to?
So, yeah, I'd like to move that we approve J, K, and L as described, giving the people noted the necessary power to make proposals for all three negotiations.
Is there a second?
That makes sense?
Okay, trustee Milstein. I said it right, thank you. And we call roll? Discussion, no, no discussion? Okay. Vanessa, if you can call the roll?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milstein?
Yes.
Just like to note that HR is going to be real busy.
Yes. Hey, tab M, the recommendation is that the Board approve the Resolution of Support for Kensington Woods School as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Support, second?
Support.
Okay. Vanessa, if you can call?
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, question?
Go.
Hi. Do you want a little explanation of what this is?
Please.
Please.
So, as you know, middle colleges are kind of growing across the state, and so we had a request from Kensington Woods School. It's a very small, 112, it's a K through 12 school. It was established in 1996, it's the first charter school in Livingston County, it was chartered by, is chartered by Central Michigan University. Their K, their nine through 12 enrollment is 61 students, and they would like to petition to the state to set up a middle, early middle college program with their high school. They expect that there might have four to five students that might enroll in the middle college program. So to do that with the state, they have to have a post-secondary partner, and so they've reached out to us to see if we would be willing to support their application for an early middle college program. So this was mentioned and described in the board packet, but there's a resolution similar to what we did for Plymouth Canton Schools last year at this time, so this is just a much, much smaller school. Yes?
We have Plymouth Canton, and probably tonight Kensington, any others? How many do we have, do we sponsor?
How many early middle colleges programs do we have? WTMC, obviously, on our campus, Ypsilanti STEM is a middle, is a middle college program in Ypsilanti. We have Dexter as an early middle college program at Dexter High School. We also have Livingston, is, Livingston County is a consortium program, so the early middle college program is with the ISD, and it's available to the five high schools in Livingston County, and then Plymouth Canton.
And why is it early middle college?
That's what the state calls it now.
Okay.
And I will tell you that the enrollments are, they don't have the enrollments. And I will tell you that the enrollments are, they don't have the enrollments for 21, 22, but in 2021, there was over 15,000 early middle college students enrolled across the state, and there was 174 either schools, consortiums, or middle college programs, and that was only through 21, 22. They haven't even posted the programs, or that does not include the 21, 22 programs. So Plymouth Canton wasn't even on this list yet.
It's going to be a late middle college?
No.
Okay.
Only early.
Just wondering.
It used to be just middle college, and then they started calling it early middle college. That's just that there's an early middle college office. So now these are all considered early middle college programs.
Great.
Any other questions? Trustee Milstein?
How many middle college students are there on campus outside of WTMC?
I knew you'd ask that question. We have, for fall, we had 1,157 duly enrolled high school students. Approximately 500 of those are early middle college students, of which 433 were WTMC students. So we have probably about, WTMC is by far the most of the middle college, but we're having growing numbers of other middle college students. So we had 23 students from Ypsilanti, and then a handful of Dexter students, and then a handful of Livingston County students. But, you know, I will get those numbers to you, but like Dexter has 78 students enrolled. Not all of those are early middle college students. They have just plain dual enrolled. I don't want to say plain. They have just dual enrolled students as well.
Thank you.
Ask a question?
I will tell you that the state now is, we have to do like individual reports to the state, and before we could just say, oh, here's all our dual enrolled students. And now the state's requiring, we have to declare, is this a dual enrolled student or a middle college student? So the state's becoming much more precise in terms of reporting.
I have a question. I know I, I'm sorry. Of those, Linda, how many are online? Like, what, just give me a rough percent versus on campus? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
So for instance, we have 87 students from, you know, a big port, not a big, not the majority. Majority of the students are on campus, but we have 87 students enrolled from Unionville, Unionville Sibewing, Subewing High School, which is up in the thumb.
Okay.
And so they, they're, they're just doing dual enrollment, but they love our programs because it's easier for students to do online than to drive the 45 miles to Delta, is the closest college to them. So I have a very close relationship with the high school counselor there, and she's actually getting students to continue on and finish up their associate degrees with us after they're graduating from Unionville Sibewing. We have students from, we had students from 87 districts in the fall semester. So of those almost 1,200 students that are dual enrolled, and includes middle college students, it was 87 school districts. It's tremendous.
Awesome. Any, any other questions, comments? Thank you. Thank you. Did we already call the roll on us? I don't remember.
Okay, no, so.
Do I hear a motion on the recommendation to approve the Resolution for Support for Kensington Woods School as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Support, okay. Vanessa? Call the roll, please.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milstein?
Yes.
I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Yay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The monthly meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.